Okay, want to go ahead and call this meeting to order. It's the April tenth, two thousand thirteen, meeting of the Shelburne Community School Board of Directors. First item is two point oh, adjustments to the agenda, the ones that I know about. In discussion matters was to, first of all, remove the policy review, six point one. I did want to add one, six point four, kindergarten enrollment. We've had some email going back and forth on that, and I thought we ought to, if you weren't already planning to do that, maybe in the principal's report, but I think we ought to discuss that a little bit.
Yeah.
Six point five, Alan has asked that we discuss the playground behind the school. Were we moving the local calendar from just, uh, action matters to discussion? Was that supposed to?
Yes.
We did, okay, so we're gonna move-
Uh, no, local calendar is action.
We are gonna keep that action. I guess I was just in for CSSU that we did that.
Can I ask a question just related to calendar?
Yeah.
Just to confirm what our calendar is even to wrap up this year in light of snow days, is that on there?
Snow days is what, would, snow days would be added to the discussion.
Okay.
The possibility of waving. That's, that might be what you're thinking, Russ.
Okay, so that we'll call six point six, snow days.
Yeah.
Okay, another action matter, gonna add to this, seven point eight, and that's leave of absence. And then eight point oh, in consent agenda, we were going to remove, I believe, the policy adoption, eight point three. Did I miss anything?
That's all I got.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. So next is audience and communication, seen none in the way of audience. We can move right on to presentations, it's local assessments and kneecaps, and once again, it's Carol and John, thank you.
The Carol and John Show.
So we decided we wouldn't bore you with a repeat of the data that you just saw because we can tell you that Shelburne's local data looks nearly identical to the CSSU data.
Okay.
And just know that we are, there are four feeding schools, we are one of the top performing schools within our district. So you can assume our numbers are slightly higher than the district's overall numbers, but that, that we are not statistically different than, than what the CSSU district looks like. So, we, we had a, a plan, we want you to just take a look at the first page and, and understand that we're, we're here to not just show Shelburne's data because we think that would be redundant, but to talk about what we can learn by looking at some data specifically, and what do we do about it? Because in our mind, we're a good school. Our schools, our scores show that, we always have been. But, we're interested in moving from good to something different, something a little better. And that's, that's the point of our discussion tonight.
Right, right, I'm thinking that it's, it's a little more of a systems change we need to look at, and we're gonna talk to you about that.
So, we'd ask you to take a look at the first, you, you're gonna-
That's okay. I'd like you to take a look at the first slide, this is a cohort group. Again, we're finding this as a real, more powerful data to look at a group over time than just that year-to-year percentile. Where, what I'd like you to do is take about thirty seconds and have some private reasoning time to yourself, and what do you notice?
You love that, don't you?
Sure.
Good technique.
Try to have a couple, two observations, maybe. Oh, timey. You can now talk to a partner next to you about your observations, a few minutes, and then we'd like a couple share outs or questions.
Is this what you do in class?
Yeah, yeah, we're running this.
So you guys might want to get together.
So, if you guys could be partners and you could be-
Yeah, that would be great, if it works out.
Interesting drop in performance on a bad economic year.
Something happened in two thousand ten.
This indicates a significant improvement in the-
What's encouraging it was some of your, you know, the top level proficiency and overall proficiency has improved and was shown that the art is more aligned and are less about that.
I know there's a question.
And definitely, which is great.
I'd like you to share out.
Okay, if you want to.
Okay. Let's come back together, I know there was some really interesting things, I know, I noticed a question that you posed as partners, and what was that question?
Um, noticing that two thousand and ten seemed to be some kind of a pivotal year.
Mm-hmm.
And I think I had noticed that in the kneecap data, in the, what we just came from, where the, the greatest proficiency is, number is down.
Yeah.
Right.
And then it goes up.
One, the little information, may or may not have affect, in two thousand seven, two thousand ten, they do do another pool of questions as they update the test, we found that out, so.
And they might, they might be slightly more rigorous.
Yeah, so, but-
So every three years, they change the pool of questions, and we, we think that two thousand and ten was a year that they upped, the cognitive-
Right, yeah, we looked into that.
Which case it was some sort of pivotal year because there were other factors.
Do you don't think that's a transition to middle school?
Very good point there, so, that was one thing you raised as that, and we had a discussion ourselves about that, and yes, I do think that has an impact. And I also feel like that some of that is, we're trying to close that communication between fifth and sixth, and one of the things, ways we did that is looking at our science curriculum a couple years ago, and, and having those, those conversations, and we're gonna talk about that later, but that's really important point that you brought up.
Ross also mentioned that he was noticing the-
You guys were eavesdropping, I thought we were supposed to call this out.
They're running around like crazy. Selecting sequence.
I'm selecting your idea. So you should feel good about that, anyway. Do you want to share, Russ, why don't you share with us what you were talking with Kathy about?
Uh, just that by eighth grade, the, you know, the numbers that were below proficiency were, you know, I think statistically significant, significantly different from where they had been in, in third grade, so there, there was definitely movement, you know, on, on the good side, pulling kids above that line, so.
Any other observations we didn't-
Before we move on.
I guess they don't check out in eighth grade like they do in eleventh grade, huh?
No.
Not quite.
I think that's starting to creep in, eighth graders.
But remember, this is fall data, and we do see something very different in our spring test, which is science.
Yeah.
True.
And, and our children.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I think the proficient with distinction has really, I mean, those last three years have been very powerful trends.
Nice growth trend.
Nice, nice. We're gonna ask you to do this one more time, same protocol, just take thirty seconds, try to get a couple observations on the next page, page three, and that's kneecap data, this year's eighth graders, starting in third grade. Okay, go ahead, with your partner, make eye contact when you're ready, is Russ gonna go ahead and talk about it?
You know, it's not, it's not clear. If you throw that, you're out. The reading is a little bit of a trend. So, you know, the question is, what's happening in math, math?
You gotta see the curriculum here.
You know, the spread we saw, eleventh grade, between, you know, the number of proficient in math relative to reading and writing, had grown quite a bit, and so it looks like this is a trend that starts here and moves its way out. You know, nothing negative necessarily.
Do they change as just every three years?
And, and proficient distinction has decreased.
And, you know, the middle year in math as well.
Oh, absolutely. And as it gets harder, or as, you know, the more people get reading, then get math.
Okay, so let's go back together, I'm gonna frame this a little differently. So, I want you to, we're looking at this pretty closely, and I'll have a couple people share, but I, I wanna just let you know that we're gonna start to look at some other cohort data, and I want you to notice overall trends also. So I'm asking you to remember the reading in eighth grade, remember the math in eighth grade, then we're gonna look at seventh and then sixth grade, and we're just looking for sort of an overall trend. So that's where we're headed, we forgot to tell you that at first.
Yeah.
But, um, some, noticing that Kathy had was, would you share that with everyone, please? About this math data? You had talked about the number of dis, proficient with distinctions?
With distinction has gone down.
Mm-hmm.
And the number of proficient has gone up.
Mm-hmm.
Over the last three years. And again, it's the same thing that, that two thousand and ten, and two thousand eleven and two thousand and twelve, so those three years, that's pretty consistent with all of those kneecap scores.
I also heard something about eleventh grade.
Uh, what, you know, the data that we saw in the, in the earlier meeting was that the number who measured proficient and above in eleventh grade for math was significantly lower than the numbers in reading and writing.
Mm-hmm.
Which, to me, suggests that, you know, there's some number of people who, you know, aren't ever gonna get math, and as it gets more rigorous and, uh, challenging as, as kids get older, you know, maybe to some extent, it's not surprising to see those numbers do, you know, trending like they are here, and, and like they apparently continue to into high school. Doesn't mean you don't want to try to improve them, uh, but it's also perhaps not too surprising that, you know, that that's what the numbers do.
Anyone else have something?
Is there a seasonal factor, are the reading and the math kneecaps given at the same time every year?
They are.
Yes, they are.
Always in October.
Always in the fall.
The new test will be in the spring, it'll be, it's total shift.
Science.
Yeah, it'll be in the spring, the, the S back. Total shift.
So just one, not to dig too deep on that, but do they, do they do the reading on one day and the math on another, or do they mix?
Typically, three days of reading and three days of math, and they're typically, we'll do reading in a three-day chunk or a two-day chunk, and then math the same, in the same manner.
And then we do writing, so there has been a question, that is the last test that they do. And it's, it's, I mean, just a variable that we've brought up a couple times, it's the long test, and, but we need to follow that protocol, but there has been a question about can, you know, would there be a difference? But then if you move one last, I mean, but there has been a question, but yes, we give them all in that sequence. Remember, only fifth and eighth take the writing, though. Not every grade.
Another question, how much training and teaching to testing is done before the children are given the kneecap test? In other words, testing skills?
Um, we do do that in perspective, I developed a packet for teachers, because sometimes we looked at, as we analyzed tests over the years with teachers, we looked at two things, test content and test format. And so, we take note of those things. So, in the test format, we looked at ways that we can help students with that, because that may impede on their ability to come up with the answer. So, we definitely feel like that's important, but overall, this kneecap really measures authentic skills, we really still believe that. So if you're doing things across the year that are about good thinking and about good writing response, then students should do well on the test.
If I could expand on that, on the one thing I think John and Carol have done really well, just last week, we had a faculty meeting where, every year, when they release these results, they release a set of questions, they're called the release tasks. And you, and we get to see the answers, we get to see how our students do, and so we can literally compare and say, on this particular question, we did worse than any other school in CSSU, what are our strengths, what are our weaknesses on those release tasks?
Mm-hmm.
And so the analysis teachers do is they'll go, they'll look at that task, and then their specific goal coming out of that is, boy, our, our kids just really struggle with, say, this type of constructed response, where they read a piece and then they have to write a short piece, and the goal is, how could you incorporate that in units that you're doing?
Yeah.
I think it's more intentional to just test taking skills, but this is the type of question we struggle with, how can we do that in social studies and science and math, so it just becomes a natural skill that they have.
Okay.
I think it's a really good approach to it.
Is, when was Bridges Math initiated?
So, can we table that? That's a great question, I'd like to table that, just until we're finished with the last slide here, okay?
You will address this.
Yeah, excellent question. Carol, we're on to page four.
Yeah, so we'd like you to, quick, you know, we're, we're gonna look at, now what we did was, we looked at the current seventh grade cohorts, 'cause we wanted to look at that, looking at the score, so I'd like you to take some time to look at that again, and you're in your natural process to look at it and talk about it. Yeah, we're gonna speed it up a little bit. Is there any sig, is something that you'd like to comment, any significance, any questions that you have noticed this?
Well, just the thing that I noticed, and I, you know, jumped ahead of the math, too, that there's not that downward blip on sixth grade for the seventh graders, which is kinda odd.
Okay, that's a nice observation, anyone else have anything?
Mm-hmm.
If not, we'll move on to just quickly peeking at the math for seventh grade.
Catch up, Tim.
Yeah. Thinking about this partnership down here, Carol.
Make it fair.
Yeah, there's less of a defined trend. Right, I mean, you're really, you know, looking at one class, one cohort, you really need to look at a whole bunch of them.
So, is anyone noticing the general trend that, that math is-
Pretty consistent.
Somewhat consistent, it's solid, it's around eighty percent or whatever, but it's fairly stagnant, I would say. And so then, let's take a quick look at the sixth grade.
Okay, Bob, now I think you can ask your Bridges question.
Any observations about the sixth grade?
Yeah.
Sixth grade reading first, anything there? And it's okay, you can say, it's okay to say, nothing's standing up.
Not as much growth as we saw in the eighth grade. Low number who were, you know, highly proficient.
Proficient with distinction, yeah. That number's going down.
All right.
Stable, yeah.
And then we'll take a look at the sixth grade math data. Four years of data, the implementation of Bridges was about four years ago.
Two thousand nine.
And it could, there's a smattering of these sixth grade kids who had Bridges off four years, but not all of them did. Some had it for two years here, some had it for three, some had it for four, as we piloted the program, so.
So are all fifth graders on Bridges Math now?
Yes, we are, this is our second year, K five, everyone is teaching the Bridges Math Program, which is a step in the right direction compared to everyday math, it's far more conceptual, it teaches the way that NCTM and all the math, the math experts across the globe say we should be teaching math, which is both conceptually and procedurally, but focusing on the concept first and then developing the procedure or algorithm, it's having kids sort of invent and make sense of mathematics versus memorize routines and, and procedures.
And next year will be also the first time that we can say, every student is being taught by math teachers, comes through math best practice, and is involved in the studio.
That's right.
We still have some teachers who are coming online for that, and it's gonna slow implementation.
That's a really good thing.
So, pretty good jump in math on, you know, below proficient, I mean, that, they're really moving up above the line.
Yeah, yeah, that's a nice, nice trend there with this cohort of kids, and so we hope to see that continue, and we expect that to continue, even, even more so.
What's interesting is the disappearance of partial proficiency in the sixth grade.
Yes, exactly.
Right, right?
Yeah.
It's gone down to three segments, really.
Yeah, so, that's an interesting observation, because what does that say about the kids that were hanging on the line?
Yeah.
That they're not proficient, right?
Right, right.
And so, does this program, and does our teaching, and do our teachers catch more of those kids that are on the cusp? It appears that way, now this is one year of data here, I'm not gonna-
We can look into it.
You know, bank on that, but it's a nice possibility.
Yeah, we also know, where Molly was talking about significant data, we know in kneecap, if it's up, if their, their scale score is up, the next year, five points, or they go down five points, that's when it's significant. So, we kinda now know a lot more about when we're looking at data to say, okay, we don't spend too much time, but it's two points up, and say, whoa, you know, so that's, that's really important as we look at that. We'll be doing that with teachers in a couple weeks.
Can you repeat that again? It's the five-point, uh-
Yeah, so we have that scale score, where three, four, let's say they're in third grade, three forty isn't proficient, if, when the next year, we see four, forty-five, at least, or above, then we can say that's a significant growth. And if we see, if we're looking at downward trends, it, it works the same way. So it's, you know, 'cause we need to be looking at data in a, you know, critical way, but yet, and, you know, doubt, it's gotta be valid way also to make those assumptions. That helps us.
Are there schools in the SU implement Bridges Math same time we did?
Yes.
Did they, did they show similar results?
That's a great question, and I'm not positive. We don't, I don't have this cohort data for anyone except our schools, so. Okay. That's a nice question, though, that we could ask Molly and Sue.
I think it's important to look at that, yeah.
I'll check into it.
Yeah, I have some information, but not all of it. So, you wanna move on?
Yeah, we do, we wanna ask the, the big questions of our night here. You, are you doing this?
Yeah.
All right. Tell me to be quiet, I know that.
No, you're, you're great. One of the things that I think's important is now we're gonna get to the so what of this whole thing, and there are two questions here, how do we get our lowest performing students to make more than one year of growth in ten months, ten months? And the second question is, how do we get our proficient students to excel and perform at a higher level? We need to continue to have all those kids on our radar, this is extremely important, but I want to be honest with you, this question here is a challenge, and I think we need to be up for that challenge. We're gonna talk to you about what, the ways that we're, we wanna do that, and we have to be thinking a little more out of the box.
So, some possible action steps, on the next slide, we'll see, number one is, is common assessments, and to, to make systemic progress in a school, I believe that you need to have common assessments at a similar time, so that, and by that, I mean, every teacher's gonna give the same assessment to all their kids, and then we're gonna enter that data into VCAT, and we're gonna have a two or something week window, so that, okay, there's your two-week window, you gotta give that unit test, and it'll be part of the program, it'll be either a Bridges or Connected Math Test, and, and they'll enter that into VCAT, and then, when we sit down and have discussions around data, we have data team meetings, or if we, if we could get some more time to, to collaboratively plan, we can then talk about, all right, let's look at the data across the district, let's look at the data specifically in these classrooms, who's doing really well here, and why? Who's not doing really well, and why? And then, so, so without those common assessments, how do you talk about kids? You do it in a non-scientific way, you do it in a, a gut feeling, oh, I think this is what's happening, I think this is what's going on, this is, if we don't have common assessments in mathematics, we're done for, we can't talk intelligently, we can't move a system forward without this. So, it's, it's, it's a huge, it's a huge undertaking, and we're, I actually was at a meeting today with the coordinators and Molly, and we said, we just blocked off, like, five days at the end of this year to say, we are gonna have this in place, so Sue can build it over the summer, and we can have common assessments at every grade level, so we can do this next year, this is a next year item.
So, John, when you say common assessments, I mean, are you really talking about having the same test in every classroom?
And administered in the same way. Yes. Standardized assessment, right out of the program, we're not, we're not saying we're gonna build an assessment, we're gonna say, we think unit three in third grade in Bridges, when it's talking about multiplicative reasoning, I'm making all this up, don't quote me, I don't, I don't really know, in the new program, or in our current program even, where it is, but we know that's important in third grade, the transition from additive to multiplicative reasoning, we're gonna, we're gonna grab that unit test, that is for sure on the top of my list in third grade, that's gonna be one of the ones we, we grab. So, it's not an additional assessment, but it's a unit test, it's a SLOC stock test everyone will give to every kid, similar to kneecap data, you know what I mean? It's, it's a common assessment.
So, how is that different from where we are today? Is, is each teacher essentially making up their own tests in this, or?
Many teachers, many teachers give the unit test, but they don't score them in a collaborative way, we don't look at that data together, they're not given at the same time.
So the only assessment that's truly common to all the schools in the SU is the kneecap?
And we, we did the common math assessment, the CMA, which is our end-of-year test for everyone, grades one, eight, one through eight, but that was a measure we came up with, it's GE-aligned, this will be the last year we give that assessment, we're gonna go to great expectations, the current status in, in Vermont is great expectations, we're going to Common Core, so, that's a, that's a test that's, will be antiquated next year, so we won't use it again after this year. So yeah, we have two measures right now we use.
You know, just to follow on to that, and I know that people don't really like to go there, but I mean, if you look at what Molly was talking about, and really the drop off in writing in fifth grade, take, take that, and it's an area that needs a lot of work. I mean, do you ever take the data and drill down and see, you know, down to the teacher level to find out, you know, I'm sure not everybody's at the same level, other people are doing, potentially, one teacher could have the keys to the kingdom on something like that.
Which is exactly why we need these common assessments.
But I mean, are you taking that data and using that to-
To do that, just that?
Yeah, to see if somebody's doing really well in writing, are they rolling that out to maybe the other teams, or?
You wanna field that one?
Yeah, in literacy, I, I mean, we're beginning to do that in literacy.
Well, what we did yesterday in the faculty room-
So like, I was gonna say.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, on April thirtieth, we have, I have all the grade levels organized by teacher, and we're gonna have all the grade level teachers, of all the fourth grade teachers, are gonna sit down with their math data from kneecap, and they're gonna compare how they did. And it's not just kneecap, but I've got Fact Fluency in there, all the common assessments we have, the CMA from last year, they're gonna look at general math performance for all their kids compared to every other teacher at their grade level.
Yeah.
So it's gonna force those discussions.
Well, oh, I'm sorry.
This is a first, by the way.
Say, what's, is there, is this commonly known throughout the faculty at this point?
We're building a culture for it, and, yeah.
Yeah, that's the thing, is we've been, yeah.
We need to build a culture, yeah.
Yeah.
And we've been leading up to it, we've been sharing more data openly, and this is the first time we're gonna sit, sit it down with that level of specificity and, and that much information about math performance at one time, so we'll see how that goes.
Yeah, we start building that in literacy, because we've had some literacy assessments in place, but it also does go back to what you talked about, is the fidelity, and there's still, we still need to work on, on that, but the VCAT has allowed us to sort the data in so many ways, and we've done a lot, I've done with both of you, and I've done it with Alan, is just taking that data out in Excel, even in VCAT, and color coding it, and, and I think you have to build the culture, and I think it's been maybe a couple years looking, doing that with the literacy, but previous to that, it, it really was very, and now we're building a culture, and, and then they say, well, what, you have to create that to say, well, what are you doing in your class? I noticed on this, and now, recently, we had on-demand writing in the class, so the kids, we give them a prompt and they write for forty-five minutes, we switched the papers, we have other colleagues scoring other colleagues' work, and that's been new, too, and that's been a real, it brings to the table, you scored this way, well, I scored this way, you know, it brings that, and so I think we continue. One of the things I was gonna mention is, I think one of the, the most powerful things that we are doing is looking at student work, and actually, that's why we need those common, more common assessment, and as we're looking at student work, it's driving the need for teachers to say, in all content areas, we need common assessment, so after unit in social studies, if you're doing something on the, you know, the World War II, or just giving you example, the prompt does, shouldn't have to be any different, we're not saying a cookie cutter, but it shouldn't really have to be that different, because you, this is the understanding you want kids to be at. So, our vision is that this becomes, that, that's a vision to have as, as, even in the content areas, to be able to do that. And I think that's huge.
Yeah, and you're, you're very quick to recognize it doesn't come without its leadership challenges.
Yes.
You know, it's not by accident that we're reading difficult conversations at the same time, because that's really, we're trying to de-privatize practice, and there is just a long entrenched history of, it's me in my classroom with my kids.
With the door closed.
With the door closed.
Yeah.
And what's happening down the hall? Well, that's your issue.
Right.
The idea that we're all in this together, and every one of us has strengths and weaknesses, and we're all trying to grow and get better tomorrow than we are today, but that's-
I, I think that's great, but yeah, yeah.
And, I would add to that element, we can, you can have a good school that does that. Good schools can close their doors and teach. You don't see great schools that do that. It doesn't happen. There's no way to go from eighty percent or ninety percent proficiency up unless it's a systemic pull in one direction.
So, you wanna go on to?
Yeah, sure. So, number two is the, the PD that we're currently doing and that we will continue to do. We've got Math Teaching That Matters. It's the Best Practices class and the Common Core that dovetails so nicely together. We've talked to you about that. And, and we're in really nice shape to transition to the Common Core. We've got new CMP three for the middle school that addresses the content shifts. We've got new Bridges materials for K two this year. Next year will be new Bridges materials for three, five, that does the content shift for us. We're, we're in really nice shape, and, and that PD that we're doing has, has also laid the foundation for this systemic type of shift that we're having in de-privatizing practice and more collaboration and planning. People see the power of planning lessons together. You can plan a lesson yourself at home with your manual, and you can, you can just follow the manual. That's all well and good. But if you want it to be to the next level, you usually can't do that in isolation, and that's part of the PD that we're doing. It's really, it's, it's very exciting work.
And I'm just gonna add that I think the district, the CSSU, in this shift to Common Core, and a lot of districts are dealing, I mean, dealing with this. And where we start, I think our focus on nonfiction reading, and then we're gonna focus on the writing, we go into that strand of nonfiction. I think that's been a huge impact on us as a district and at CSSU, and we're sharing things now in units and, and having us in that same room. I did the six A, facilitated that. It was a wonderful experience in giving teachers the time, the knowledge, and the time to work on units and things like that. So, I think that's a really important piece that I think's gonna strengthen us at our schools, so. You wanna talk about, me talk about collaboration? I think that's huge. Third one, it's more collaboration. This is, to me, and I think the principals will both talk about this. I believe this is something that's going to have to, we're gonna look at systems change for this is, everyone needs to be at the same table when you're planning for students, to address all students. And one of our biggest impacts, our obstacles is scheduling, I think one of them. And we have to look at ways that we can make that a priority. So, if you're planning lessons with, planning a lesson is, how are you gonna address those kids? If you have people that support people working with students in your classroom, if you don't have the time to collaborate, it really becomes fragmented. And, and we can't, that's gonna make, I think that's really gonna take that and help us shift and really reach all populations. And I think we have to have the special educator at the table, literacy folks, the teacher, the parent in the classroom. And we're all in it together, and I think if we can do this consistently, you're gonna see more movement instead of the fragment, fragment that can happen. When you're trying, we're all trying.
Can you expand on that a little bit more about having the parents in the class?
The parents.
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 Parent educators in the class that are working also because they're part of the team. And we're all in this together, and I think we can make the shift, but it's a big shift when we're looking at the population we're trying to address. But it takes all of us working together, and the kids at the higher, I mean, and, and all levels, so we have to really keep that in mind.
And, and you know, to address the, you, you brought up parents. That is, that is a concern of mine, especially in mathematics, because I've, I've had instances in, in the last month where I've sat down with parents and I've taught them some math to show them how we are learning and doing math, and they're like, oh, my gosh, I finally understand what you're talking about. But I think without some depth of conversation, it's very difficult to understand. Don't show your kid that standard subtraction algorithm. That actually undoes what we're trying to do, and it's counterintuitive. Parents just wanna help their kids. Of course they do. They're gonna sit with, with them and do their homework and say, let me just show you how to do this. And that is exactly opposite of what we want to happen.
So, how does Khan Academy work with?
Don't go to Khan Academy.
Okay.
So, Khan Academy's nice for, for a lot of reasons because it can support kids in practicing things that, that they've already been taught or conceptually understand.
But the methodology is different from?
It's very procedural. It's let me show, Khan will, Sal and Khan will sit down with his pad and go, here's how you factor a, a binomial. Ready? Let me just show you. Now you try it, and he gives you tests on those things. And so, that's exactly how everyone in this room learned math, I'm willing to, to bet. And it is not the way we research says we should be teaching math.
But the one nice thing about that, I'll do a counterpoint to it, is once you've learned it, if you then are in a science, you know, learning something scientific that you can't remember exactly how to, I don't know, do the quadratic equation or something like that, it's a great reference tool to go back to that and just look it up and say, oh, yeah, that's what I did.
I've been doing it as a refresher.
But exactly. But, but, but for conceptual understanding of why that works, why that.
That won't help the parents who are trying to help their kids.
That's right, because it's gonna show the procedure. It pretty much cuts to the chase and goes to the standard algorithm. The procedure. When I say procedure, that's what I mean. Here's how we subtract. We take the ones away. If there's not enough there, we rename from the tens. And, you know, great, but what does subtraction mean? Why does that work? You know, if kids can explain that, and they know that, well, I'm just taking a borrowing ten from the tens place, which is why I scratch out that three and write a two, and I move the ten ones over to the ones place, and I now call that three a thirteen, that's why it works. I haven't changed that top number. If they can explain that, go to Khan Academy, refresh yourself on the subtraction procedure. But if you can't do that, don't go there. It undoes the good that we're, we're trying to do.
So, why? I've forgotten all this.
You have the Khan Academy still linked to the website then if it's?
Well, it's, you know, that's a good question. Maybe I should remove it. I mean, I've sort of changed my opinion about it.
Or disclaimer.
But it does have value in that, like, like Patty's saying, if you, if kids understand the concept, and they just, they're like, oh, I figured this out, but it's gonna take forever. What's that procedure that, I forget that algorithm? It does have that. How many kids are using it? I can tell you that because I can tell you how many times people have clicked on that link. It's negligent. Negligible, not negligent, negligent. Anyway.
So, then where do parents go to learn math to do ways? If they taught us wrong?
Tim, this is a great question, and that's why I wanted to address it with Kathy and with all of you, that I, I need to be more present at curriculum nights. I need to host parent math nights, and I'm, I'm planning to do that, because I don't know how else to do it than to sit down and do some math. I think that's the best way. I, I sat and talked with a, a, a very nice couple who are friends of mine, acquaintances of mine, and have a daughter in fourth grade, and they were, they were telling me what they were doing for homework. We've got this workbook, and we're doing this on. And so, they, they came in and met with me, and we sat down and talked for half an hour, and they were like, I still am not sure what you're saying. Okay, and so I just, here's this out, here's this multiplication area model, and here's the standard algorithm. How are they alike? And they were like, what? And within ten minutes, they were making sense of that. They had made sense of the standard algorithm and then understood why it worked, and they were like, wow, I never knew why that worked. And I'm saying, that, there it is, right there, and they, and they totally got it, but I think it's, you kinda have to have some time to do that.
I need an appointment with you.
Check calendars before. I can make time tomorrow.
And, and the reason I ask that is because there's math discussion every day after school with the kids. That they come home and they talk about math.
That's great.
First graders talking about division.
That's right.
You know, to his fourth grade sister. So, we need to be part of that somehow too.
Absolutely. That is absolutely on our, my radar anyway. I think everyone else is. You know, Patty and I have done some stuff in the newsletter. We've written about math and how to help, but I don't know how many people read it. I know you're looking at that. We're way over our time. Let's go quickly to, what's the difference between intervention and support? Support is what we're currently doing in math with the two people that I oversee in the math center, where we're supporting kids. We call it tier two. These are not kids that are on IEPs. However, they're not meeting the proficiency standards in, in all areas, and teachers are worried about them. Their parents are worried about them. We currently see twenty percent of our students in math, K eight. That's a big number. It should be more like ten percent, and if it were more like ten percent, then we could do what's true intervention, which is, and, and when, when we see these kids, we see them once a week for thirty-five minutes, or twice a week for thirty minutes, maybe. That's, that's support. We're supporting what they're doing. Intervention is, just like literacy intervention, you catch them early, because the research is if, if kids are behind in first grade in math, it is very difficult to catch up. First grade, by the end of first grade, if they're significantly behind, it is ridiculously hard to catch them up. So, if we can do early real intervention, five days a week, fifteen to thirty minutes, depending on the grade level, we can potentially shift those ones and twos that are below that line on your graphs to a really negligible number.
And that's the research on effective schools shows that that happens. So, just to let you know, there is lots of research out there.
The question is how do we find time to do that? Take it over administration.
Yeah, so, as we, as we talk about other things that we've tied into this conversation, really what we call the extended school day has really been our focus. The idea that, first of all, how do we maximize the time? Right now, we've got time from eight, ten to two thirty or two forty, depending on the student. How do we maximize that in the middle of the day? What can we do creatively with our scheduling? And really starting to think of, is that enough time? And if it's not enough time, where do we get more? Can we be creative with staff schedules where some staff are coming in at nine and working till four, and we're doing some regular after-school program that's connected? It is very intentional while we're having the conversation about part two that got some people's attention over the last week, that this after-school program needs to be connected with what we're doing during the day. Granted, we can't have a ten-hour school day for kindergartners. That doesn't make sense. But we can still connect what's happening, if we got them in our building from three to six, we can connect what's happening at twelve o'clock with what's happening at four o'clock in some capacity.
Reinforce this way.
Reinforce it, or a lot of times what we have right now are these students that we're talking about who need these interventions. We're, we're pulling them, they need a literacy intervention because they're struggling to read, so we're pulling them out of their reading class in first grade, give them the intervention. So, then they're farther behind. So, okay, what can we do with scheduling? And could some of that intervention happen after school? What happens in school? Because that's when our interventionists are on staff. So, can we get the interventionists there after school? Because I guarantee you, we talk to parents and say, we'd like your child in, in middle school, we choose between intervention and world language. You can't go to French because you need help and support. What if I want my child in French, and what if I want this support book? I'm sorry, we can't do it in our schedule.
Not, not a good answer.
Not a good answer. But we're limited by what we have. So, those are really the things, and I know one political hot potato that's gonna be on the table next year is the Vision Calendar. Know that it has our, as administration, absolute full support.
But that is working with the low, lowest performant, lowest performers during the intercession.
Highest performance.
Yeah, okay, what goes, my concern is what happens in the intercession? Is there regression for the ones that aren't involved in the, you know, the special treatment?
Right. Well, who says we can't have special treatment for our highest flyers who wanna be accelerated?
I, I wasn't sure that the highest flyers would have access to that as well.
Absolutely. If we're offering a part-two program, that part-two program in that intercession time is as much enrichment as it is remediation.
Really, really, to me, is slow things down in the afternoon. You know, you can do some of that enrichment that you want for your child so desperately in this week or two-week time period, so you don't have to cram three things in in the afternoon, four days a week.
But how, how does that work? I mean, is that a paid day? Is that, does that count toward the hundred and seventy-five days of school?
If I, if I, if I could.
Yeah, there's a lot of questions.
We're gonna have a ton of time, and believe me, there'll be plenty of discussion on the Vision, on the Vision Calendar.
But that's, it gets within what we're talking about.
You, I, I think, you know, sounds like, first of all, the, the, the numbers are encouraging. And what you guys are doing here in, in Action Steps one through four is great, very much within your control and ability to do things about. To, to me, you know, yes, you can try to do something within the current environment or the current framework that you have regarding scheduling. The Vision is maybe another big step, and it may come and it may not. I'm glad my kids are gonna be out of school, so I don't, you know, it don't affect me personally, because I, you know, kids will probably, especially high schoolers, will probably complain about, I wanna camp. And, you know, all the, all the things that are gonna be big discussions, there's gonna be money issues. You know, how, how do you make it, can you make it cost neutral and still do these things? So, yeah, there will be, there'll be plenty of discussion. Oh, it's gonna be great. Any, any more questions or, as I, like I say, I think, you know, Tom's like you're doing great stuff here with, with the action steps. I applaud what you're doing certainly with the common assessments, because I'm sure that's as, as challenging as anything here to, to do that, so.
I think you're one.
Yes, thank you very much, Carol and John.
If you don't mind, um.
The piece I'd drawn for John and Carol, just to, to wrap that up, is the one thing that I know we always have a conversation with you about is, where are the targets? Where are the numbers?
Yeah.
And I, and I hope you come away with an understanding that our targets are, those kids who are below proficient, we wanna see them disappear. We really do. I mean, that's, that's our target.
It's gotta be also through the whole school. That's gonna be, you know, that's, it's gotta be in our minds and creating that.
We want everyone to be blue or purple or whatever that good color is. I think it's blue, blue purple.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
John, I'll see you tomorrow.
Maybe you can sit in on your son's math lesson.
There you go, anytime.
Yes, the Endeavor Key, I shared. Thank you, Carol. So, if you go in, I'm, my desk is straight ahead in the room. I'm a classroom, you know. You're not the room in the left. Right, right.
So, moving on to reports to the board, first is the principal's report.
Okay. Can I assume you'd like a three-minute version?
That'd be great.
As long as we don't talk about fire lanes, as soon as we don't.
You don't want me to talk about it?
You just talked about our PTO.
I think we should.
So, you know, looking through there, I know you can read it. I mean, I, I'm gonna highlight a couple of things. One, SCS Musical and Kristen Bamberger. We had a new hire there, and I, I don't know if you, you've gotten feedback from the community, but she has, has rocked the house in terms of her impact and outstanding performance, doubled the participation, modified even the choreography, so every single student was onstage the entire production.
Four young boys too, I understand.
And we had eight boys up there. Yeah, so. She is great, and she's already in conversations with me about how can we make it better next year. She's on board, and she's, she's a great hire. Excited about that. Same, same with Tim. Tim has made a real strong transition, had a great concert, and to hear his fifth graders go from noise to music is fantastic. Couple competitions, our kids have done well, and the other one would be this, we just came off two weeks ago, a great middle school theme that was really organized by Molly McClasky. She was the kind of brains of the push behind bringing the, the two autistic gentlemen to all of us at CSSU schools, and then our student council was able to take and leverage it to a full middle school, two days. It was a theme across entire schools. We took the entire middle school over to Williston, met these folks, watched their documentary, and then came back for a full afternoon of activities organized by student council. And nothing but great feedback from parents and kids about it. It was really good days. And other than that, we're all.
All right, so, given our time, we just, on the back page there for professional development notes, we do want everybody to know that we, obviously, the last time we talked, we talked about safety, so our school safety committee does meet monthly, and we have had a, an intruder drill that was announced, and then last month, we also had one that was unannounced. It went very well. One of the rationales for the drills, just to let everybody know, is so that we can get feedback to know what we need to be doing that we might not be doing well. And we do that every time in a debrief, and then usually, you know, it's, it could be something mechanical. Dave fixes it. It could be, you know, where people are, or some kind of traffic in the hallway, that type of thing. So, that's been really good. And we are planning right now for a full school evacuation. The site that we're looking at is the old house. I believe we call it, what, Shelburne Field House? Is that the correct? Which of course is across the street, so be looking for more information about that, but, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna do that, and we'll do that in.
Can we get press coverage or?
Uh, well, well, you know, we'll have the police there, the fire, possibly rescue, so it, it should be interesting, but we'll, we'll let y'all know. It won't be this month. Uh, well, well, you know, we'll have the police there, the fire, possibly rescue, so it, it should be interesting, but we'll, we'll let y'all know. It won't be this month. And then we have had a lot of conversation about the congestion in the, in the circle during drop-off pickup times. And you may have noticed that we've had, our fire department, we've had the fire truck there a couple of times. And they've been there just to make sure that they're making a presence to demonstrate how large those trucks are and how important it is that they be able to access the building during those times. So they kind of park their truck and ask people if they please won't park in the fire lanes. And, you know.
We need to do something about this sign.
Yep.
I think we did that.
Very misleading. It tells people to go over to the sidewalk side for dr, for pickup.
And we, that was brought to our attention yesterday. Hadn't made the connection, so.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
We're on it. Would you like to pass that to me for my reminder?
Thank you very much for that. And our conversation with the PTO last night, we had a great discussion for about twenty minutes, and Dave brought up some great points. And we've now, our takeaway from that really was that we're gonna focus on some alternatives that we can offer parents and, and community members who are dropping off and picking up by virtue of saying things like, you know, did you give consideration to parking in the railroad, the train station parking lot, and then walking down during nice weather, or, you know, those type of alternatives? And just give a whole list of them, so people can go on the website and just say, oh, yeah, I didn't think of that. It is, May is walking, jogging, biking month in Shelburne, I believe. And so consequently, we're gonna really push that and see if people can come to school in alternative methods.
Can they park across the street at the ball field and walk across there?
I don't know why not.
I, I don't know the rules, so I'm sorry, I don't wanna say anything. But I can certainly look into it.
One thing that didn't come up yesterday, and I have this board corner article that I'm gathering all the info for, but there's a, there's a small school across the street from ours that has almost no transportation.
Waldorf?
Yeah. And everyone gets driven to school there, so that doesn't really help our congestion problem, so.
Oh, that's true.
Are they, are they there at the same times as?
They, no, they, they let out half an hour later.
Do they arrive like fifteen minutes later?
They start at eight-thirty. So they're a little upset.
And then I, I'll, I'll just let you read the rest of it, it's just committee updates, so, given our time, we'll go right into.
The, the school enrollment chart, which I'm always interested in. September two thousand eleven, twelve, and then April two thousand twelve, and then September two thousand thirteen, are those correct?
Those are correct. The, September two thousand thirteen is based on, we, we have a steady slew of people who are coming in and saying, I haven't moved the community yet, but I'm gonna be here. Those are solid.
Okay, I'm sorry, so that's, that's projected.
That is projected.
That's projected, and the one that says September two thousand, I'm sorry, April two thousand twelve, that's April two thousand thirteen.
Yep.
Okay, so, okay, thank you.
Yep, they should be twelves and thirteens, they should, it should start with.
April thirteen, this is right now, we have seven hundred and seventy-one kids in the building.
So, so we're projecting to go from seven seventy-one to seven eighty-three.
Projected, but does not include, we always have some transition over the summer with families moving out, and it's hard, we're trying to get a handle on that.
That, I mean, that, that piece from year to year could be, could be a wash. What moves in, what moves out? The, the, the big number, I think, here is, um, you know, you're, you're graduating a class, well, for, for starters, we're graduating a class of eighty-five, and, and you've already got eighty-three, and kindergarten is kind of pre-enrolled, so you're not losing anything there. You're picking up, you know, you're estimating ten percent from kindergarten to first grade, which is pretty typical for, for what we do, so, yeah.
Nice job recruiting fourth graders, I see.
Yeah, we did a nice job, didn't we? Yeah, we keep those numbers, Larry.
So it'll be.
And we did start kindergarten screenings today, and it's a full house, let me tell you.
So, which, we, we've added a discussion on, on that to the discussion matters, so. CSSU debrief, legislative update, I think there's something in our packet on that, and actually Elaine's here, and there was one item on there that I think you said you're gonna be in Montpelier tomorrow to discuss that, I didn't completely follow it, but it sounds like they're contemplating doing something with voting on supervisory union budgets that will really gum up the works, if it's.
Voting on SU budget separately.
Was that to have the public vote?
Yes, it would be a regular vote.
That, that's a piece that I wasn't quite sure on.
So the problem is, so you guys purchase a lot of services from the SU. So imagine that your budget passes and ours doesn't. All of those purchased services, they're in limbo. You can't hire, you can't do anything, and then.
So you'd have to pass five budget votes?
No, you'd have, I, I think three. Shelburne, Shelburne, Shelburne voters, I believe, under this would face three budgets when they go to the polls. One for Shelburne Community School, one for CVU, and the supervisory union budget of whatever description would, would end up as.
But that would happen in Williston, in Heinsburg. If anyone's piece goes down.
If, if the supervisory union piece goes down, uh, that's the one that, you know, then you have no idea. And, and I guess what, what's, what's fascinating about it, I assume that that supervisory union budget is really comprised of, there's a piece of that supervisory union budget that would also be part of the Shelburne budget that they're voting on, and the CVU budget that they're voting on, so, you know, it might all add up to, let's say, forty million dollars, but five of that is, is really double counting. And, and so if the CSSU piece of it gets shot down, well, and we pass the Shelburne, well, we kind of already passed that anyway. So that's, that's the bizarre thing about it.
What they would be voting on is the, the shared services that are shared for Charlotte, Williston, I mean, the Shelburne.
You'd be voting on the whole thing.
Right.
Right now, that's what they're saying. That's, my testimony is gonna be sorted out.
So what is the status of this? Is this?
This is, they just started thinking about it on Tuesday.
Oh, okay, so.
But it is in bill form on Wednesday.
What's the logic?
This is what I heard.
We're not sure.
I heard that a group of legislators got together and said, can you believe, Ed, spending is up by seven million dollars, and only fourteen budgets failed? So what are we gonna do about runaway spending? And what are all the ideas? So all the ideas include, let's change the percentage on hold harmless. That's if you're, you've got declining enrollments, you are guaranteed, I think at this point ninety-six percent of your population, you don't drop more than that. So they're gonna lower that number. The excess spending threshold will go, will get lowered. So if, right now, it's if you spend one hundred and twenty-five percent above the average per pupil, you spend two dollars for every dollar you spent, or you're charged two dollars for every dollar you spent. That's gonna go down to, I think it's one twenty-three in, in the first year and one twenty-one percent in the second year. They're going to, over time, eliminate the small schools grant, the, you know, there's a, a number of provisions. One of them is around voting for the SU budget. Assuming that SUs are just spending like drunken sailors, and, so, I mean.
So you mentioned that spending is up by seven million, so what's the denominator on that equation?
Oh, my gosh, what is it, two billion?
Right, so we're up seven million or?
I think it's like two billion.
Yeah.
It's crazy. I, you know, I mean, I think it's, there's a frustration, I, I also heard, and this is just a story, so, I mean, really, they started talking about this on Tuesday, I think. That there is a supervisory union somewhere that is a pretty small supervisory union, maybe with like twelve hundred kids who just went out and budgeted for an assistant superintendent. And so that's frustrating to people. How, why would you need an assistant superintendent in a supervisory union that has twelve hundred kids when we've got supervisory unions, our very own, of forty-three hundred students with one? I just think that the solution doesn't necessarily match what the problem is. So there's another part of this bill that also speaks to developing ratios, minimum ratios for superintendent to students, principals to student, teachers to students, staff to students. So that would be a way of saying, hey, you're overspending. You don't, you know, I don't know.
But, but interestingly, again, if I, if I understood this correctly, this is coming out of Ways and Means, this isn't coming out of the Education Committee. This is, you know, this is the numbers crunching committee, this isn't the Education Committee that's driving this, so.
So I don't know.
I, I mean, you know, some, some pieces of it sound, you know, interesting, and that they have promise, the, the budgetary thing, sounds like.
I just think they don't understand how it works.
How did the CSSU budget get approved in the past?
It gets approved by the CSSU Board.
Because it's all an assessment in the local.
That's what I thought, our own board, but not by the public.
Every, right, every, every piece of the supervisory union budget is allocated to the local boards, and whether that's purchased services, which are expenditures that are incurred on our behalf, and then just billed directly back to us. Or these two salaries plus the other administrative expenses, which are allocated to us based on population, not, you know, not on actual usage, you know, Elaine's not a lawyer and, you know, marking your time in ten-minute increments.
So they, so the legislature feels that the boards are just.
I, you know, I'd be, I am making it up. I really don't know exactly what's happening with the sausage making, I just know that, I do have a copy of the bill. And it does talk about, in pretty much detail, how this would happen. Including that the town clerks in each one of the school districts would be the ones to count the ballots and decide how many for and against. And then within ten days, town clerks in all of our towns would get together to co-mingle the votes and find out whether or not the budget passed or didn't.
Oh, so you would take the total vote of all of Williston, Charlotte, Shelburne?
For the SU budget.
For the SU budget.
As we used to say, what a cockamamie idea.
No, no, right, 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 right.
Thought it'd be a way to get to a record.
Yeah.
Drops the CSSU budget, oh, well, I guess you're out.
Similar to Dave's question about how they came up with that percentage increase, has anybody looked at the methodology of how they came up with that two-billion-dollar number, or whatever it is?
That's just total Ed spending in Vermont, I think that's.
Do you think, is it possible that there's some double counting in that? In other words, are they summing up the, the local school districts and the, the supervisory union, even if the supervisory union has the, the shared services? And I mean, are those shared services split out, or are they double counted in that number?
I would think that it wouldn't be double counted, but I don't know.
I mean, you'd hope that it wouldn't, but is, is it possible?
I mean, we do turn in our budgets, right? You know, by that certain date in January, we have to submit our budgets, and we're not double submitting. So I'm assuming that they're able to put it into their spreadsheets in a way that reflects real spending, but I don't know that for sure.
So, um, anything else? I think, that's the biggest, scariest thing at the moment. So, and there is a legislative breakfast next, just trying to explain, next Monday morning. We could move on to five point three, from a report from the Facilities Committee, or just kind of the status on.
Yep. We met last week, and the purpose of the committee is essentially to come up with recommendations to the board about how, what some proposed capital expenditures could be, looking at budgets in years going ahead. And so we've got two board members on the committee, we've got the two co-principals, we've got the facilities director, David Kelly, and we've got Bob Mason at this point. It doesn't have to be limited to that, but that's what we're starting with. And why now? It has to do with the debt service on the bond that is going to be, the total debt service is a hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and change, that's in principal and interest. It's a twenty-year bond, and the last payment is scheduled for December first of two thousand and fifteen. So in order to do what we're hoping we're gonna be able to propose to do, we need to think about that bond and where we're gonna get money going forward. So the next steps are, our next meeting is gonna be down in Heinsburg with David Epstein, who was part of the whole process that started back in two thousand and five, and we're gonna go through the Heinsburg school and see what they did there in the way of reconfiguration and talk with them about that. David Epstein was part of the TruX Cullens Group. And we have a full report from them that came out in two thousand and five, so we've reviewed that, reviewed that also. So we're moving forward. Any questions?
Is there going to be a revised or updated projection of student enrollment as part of this? Because it sounds like it needs to be updated.
I guess honestly, I, I think that's, that's a separate issue. I think the scope of what we're looking at here doesn't involve any, doesn't involve any expansion.
No.
I mean, you know, and, and, you know, the, I, I guess the, the, Kathy addressed the why now, I'm not sure we've addressed the why. You know, the, the biggest piece, the kind of must-do piece in all of this is the roof. You know, that, that it kind of starts there, the roof is near, you know, everything I've always heard, the roof is, is either at or beyond its rated useful life. And we want to do something about it before it starts leaking, and I guess there are a couple of binary, you know, problem areas, but we want to do something about it before it becomes a real problem, and we end up with mold and all manner of other ugly things that can happen. So then, you know, the next question is, okay, we gotta do, we've gotta do the roof, what are the other things that, you know, can and should be done around the building, either because, you know, it needs to be done because of the physical plant, or in the case of the middle school wings, you know, can we survive the way we are? Yes. Educationally, is this the best environment to have the, you know, the big open hallways and the distractions and, and that sort of thing? You know, so, so I think all of those things are, are to be.
Safety issue now, too.
Yeah, so, you know, all, all of those things are to be addressed as, as part of this. And, and kind of the mechanics of it come back to the why now. Let's, let's look at this and, you know, do something so that the timing is such that we don't have a hundred and thirty-something thousand dollars in annual debt service drop off the budget, be gone for two years, and then come back a few years later and try to add whatever that, that debt service number is. Because people aren't gonna remember that it dropped off a couple of years before, but they'll sure sit up and take notice when, you know, something like this gets added back into it. And, and that, I, you know, that's not to say that we need to find projects that'll spend a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars worth of annual debt service. Maybe it comes in under that, maybe it comes in over that, I don't know.
When we were considering the trackers, the
Solar.
The solar program. Everybody felt that the best place for him was on the roof, but the roof would need to be reinforced. I mean, that, that's a big capital project, just to reinforce it, to support those panels. But there'd be a payback there with the, the solar energy.
As you come to know, Dave, you know that if there's a potential payback, he's gonna be talking about it on his committee.
But anything that we do has ripple effects about, of, of other things that need to be done also. Nothing can be just done in isolation. There are other considerations all around the, so what we're gonna be doing is putting together checklists and priority lists and what, what we think needs to be done, should be done, when, so forth.
Yeah, we have a great actual review from two thousand and five, you probably remember, Russ, because I saw your name on the committee, that went through and said, here are the educational specs of the school. Looking at the school now, it was a broad scope saying, these are areas that you might want to address. And then it was capital saying, you know, here are the projects you have to do. That's our first starting point, is going back and reviewing those on a broad scope, saying, what are the needs of the school holistically? And updating it, and that'll, that'll be our meeting in May. And I think, you know, any of you are welcome to join that at any time, or if you want us to, you know, share that stuff out, we're more than happy to.
And in two thousand and five, we were looking at adding space to the building.
I remember that.
And, and, you know, came to the realization, you know, most of the way through the project, hey, maybe, maybe we don't really need extra space. Right, and, and so, you know, all, all that ended up, you know, in, you know, files or binders or.
Right, it's some really good work, it's some interesting work.
Yeah, and cool stuff, I mean, we're looking at putting it on a second floor and all manner of, all manner of neat things.
And, yeah, I mean, obviously, that didn't go anywhere, and, you know, I forget who was in this conversation, but, you know, looking around, well, you, you know, I guess it was in the agenda meeting the other day, it was, you know, looking around the room and, or around the building, you know, feeling like we, oh, we don't have any space. Well, yeah, we do. You know, we, we have expanded certain things to fill space. But if you really had to, there's probably three or four classrooms
Sure.
that, you know, that we could easily come up with, or maybe not quite so easily, but. That, you know, that we could easily come up with, or maybe not quite so easily, but without too much pain, that we could recapture three or four classrooms in the building to use them as classrooms if need be as opposed to their current usage.
We need to find one, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Looks like.
Okay, so if we can move on to discussion matters, 6.1, we said we were removing, 6.2.
Could I ask why we removed the policy discussion from?
Because my understa- I got an email saying that Cindy had been out and that she wasn't quite ready and that, that's why we were pulling policy stuff.
Yeah, okay, alright. Policy number, I was surprised to hear that.
You're all primed for it?
I was all ready.
Did your homework.
Yeah, you just have to.
It's always next month. Put, put it in idle until, until next month.
I feel like the Beola player.
But Dave, 6.2, Communication Ford Corners, you said you were working on.
They're not there.
I did get a bunch of input from Bob and, and I have all that information that he did a bus census for me. And I had that handy for the PTO meeting last night, which was fun. But yeah, it should come out in the next few weeks.
Okay. Anybody want to volunteer to do one on kneecaps? I mean, I, I think there's a lot of good data there and I think what John Carroll presented tonight, you know, some of the action steps that are going on, I think would be good information for the community to, to learn about if somebody wants to, see everybody sitting on their hands.
I think I remember Bob Finn doing one on kneecap scores last year.
I could dust that off.
And update the choppers.
So Bob, Bob, if you're willing, thank you Dave for volunteering, Bob.
If I could find it, I'll be happy to volunteer.
And I would, I would check, I would check with Molly, you know, to get some of the data from her and, and, you know, John, John and Carol didn't present a, a lot of it tonight because as they said, ours pretty much mirrors the Supervisory Union, but maybe get, you know, a few specifics on that from Molly. But I, I think as much as anything, it's, it's focusing on the action steps.
Which issue of the Shelburne News is going to do the buses?
Well, I was gonna say, right, you guys will have to slug it out to see, you know, just make sure they don't end up in the same week and other than that, it probably doesn't much matter.
It's not going to be for at least two more weeks, so, mine.
So we'll, we'll let you guys cash that one out.
Make sure you don't put it on vacation, we, cause I wouldn't want to miss it.
It's not so much.
Issues when you get back from vacation, Tim, come on.
Remember, Tim, it's not so much when it comes out, it's the week after it comes out.
Right.
I want to be ready with my response.
That's when you want to be on vacation.
Next is 6.3, CSSU Board Composition, CVU Representation. I, I assume that this is on here, there was some discussion at the last CSSU meeting, not tonight, but the, a month ago, where CVU is, I guess, requesting that they get an additional, at least one additional representative on the Supervisory Union Board. And I guess legally, we could do that if we were so inclined to approve that.
We would ask, we'd have to petition the state board.
Okay.
But we would have to agree to.
Petition, yeah. And, you know, my, my viewpoint of it is, to some extent, I think CVU feels a little ganged up on once upon, you know, once in a while. You know, the, the composition of the board is three members from each of the K to eight boards. And so what's interesting about that is you actually have a majority of each of the K to eight boards on the CSSU Board. Whereas you've got three representatives from CVU out of an 11-member board. So, you know, even if we, even if every CVU member were on the Supervisory Union Board, they're still outvoted by the K to eights on things. And, and, you know, the, the most recent one where there was a little bit of contentiousness perhaps was how to allocate the, the CY expenses. That, you know, there was some feeling amongst the K to eight boards that more of those services are accessed at CVU than they are at K to eight. CVU didn't agree, but they lost. You know, I, I guess, so that's kind of the issue, you know, they, they're framing it that they would just, you know, there are more, more of their members that would like to participate. And, and I do think that they're at, you know, a little bit of a disadvantage when they go back to their board that you've got three people trying to explain to and sometimes convince 11. Whereas, you know, each of the K to eight boards has had a majority of their members sitting there hearing the discussion firsthand and isn't having to go back and, and, you know, try to convince, what was the math? Eight other members of, of the, you know, rationale for something, so.
I know Williston is going to, or does object because of the size. They have more board members, don't they, Williston? Or feel like they should have more board members because of the size of the school?
Williston has, you know, yes, I mean, they, they've got the largest population and the CVU Board is actually somewhat proportionate relative to population. The CSSU Board is not and, and it's not that that was a choice of somehow of the CSSU, you know, of, of any part of CSSU, it, it's, it's, you know, guided by state statute. And you could argue that it goes against the one-man-one-vote principle. And, and I don't think that that's ever been challenged in the Vermont court system. It'd be interesting to watch. But, you know, Williston can be as unhappy as they want about it, but I, I, I don't think it's going to change anything, nor do I think they'd get the votes to support it. At least the votes on the, on the Supervisory Union Board to go petition the state if we wanted to try to do anything about it. I, I do feel personally, but this is why it's on here as a discussion matter, that I think it's fine if, if, you know, we added, you know, one or two members from CVU if, if, if that's what they want and makes them happy. I don't think it changes the dynamic of any of the, you know, issues that, that may come up. But, you know, questions, you know, discussion feelings?
I'm with you. I think.
Are there any other exceptions in the state that, where there is a, more than three representing the high school Supervisor Union Board?
It's a good question that I don't know the answer to, but I can ask Elaine to look into it. I don't think it happens very often was my understanding, but I don't know for sure.
Tim or Dave, you got, you guys are on the SU.
I mean, I'm not that close to it, but I mean, it seems like a reasonable request.
I don't think it'll do any harm, at least to, you know, at least to request the, the waiver or whatever, so.
I don't see any issues.
Okay. Next item, 6.4, Kindergarten Enrollment. You know, we've had, I, I've had some emails and discussions with Patty and I think copied, you know, all of you on, on some of those emails, but it's a big number.
It is. And we've got some data for you, so. And some requests and an answer. I mean, we'll just cut to the chase and say, we're requesting an additional kindergarten teacher for next year.
Yeah.
And so probably the easiest way to frame it is look at the chart on the front.
Just gonna say a little private reason to look at the chart.
You know, the number as of, the, the number has changed since I printed this. I didn't update the bottom. I have 84 now. You can see the last time when we, our bubble class that is currently going from fifth to sixth is that 2007, 2008. That currently, that class is actually projected to be 107 kids next year. But at April screening time, it was six fewer than what we had show up today and tomorrow. So we looked at that and, and any questions on the front in terms of the data?
The, the progression every year has been, you go, you know, that number for April screening grows by the first day of school. And that also grows when that kindergarten class goes into first grade.
Right.
Yeah. Because we usually have 90 kids.
Easy.
We could, we could have 90 kids by the first day of school and, and the following year it could be 100 when, when they're in first grade. And so you're asking to go from four kindergarten teachers to five.
Yeah.
Our current, our current year is the second from the bottom. We started with 65 in April. In September, we were 71. And then as of 3/21/13, we're still at 71.
Still at 71. It's been stable. That hasn't grown.
Okay, so the real, the big jump was in 2007, 2008.
Well, but that, yeah, I mean, you, you had a big jump from what showed up in April to what showed up on the first day of school. That class today is 104 students.
So we were trying to show a trend.
Okay, so that's the.
That's years later.
But, but you could, you could argue that a significant amount of that growth is what showed up between kindergarten and first grade. Because then the classes tend to stay fairly consistent from, you know, from year to year as they go from first to second to third to fourth. But they do grow, you know, every year they, they, you know, we get more kids in first grade than we had in kindergarten. I don't know where they've been for kindergarten, but apparently they're not in Shelburne, but they live here and then they come to.
Or they could be in preschools that have kindergarten.
So that's now the fifth grade is.
So the current fifth grade.
It's going to sixth grade. I think the piece to remember about that 2007, as we talked, long-term budget. That's, that's the class that we recommended and supported. We kept five teachers with that class up until this year. It was a six-year program of five teachers. And then next year, we're going back to four.
So remember that teacher will go back to the current fourth grade.
You know, the, the longer term implications of this class, assuming it grows to 100 by the time it reaches first grade, is how do we have five, you know, we probably are going to have to have five teachers with that class all the way through middle school or all, all the way through elementary school at least.
How does that work? Does that person?
We've done it for the last, for the last five years.
It throws our looping model into chaos. It really does. It gets, it gets pretty complicated, but we deal with it.
One of our fifth grade teachers right now, he started with the class he has right now as fifth graders. He started with them as third graders. So he's actually had them third, fourth and fifth and just moved up those grades with them.
And, and, you know, part of the, I mean, we, we didn't have looping when we set up the current structure, but I, I think, you know, part of that third grade standalone was to give some flexibility.
Gotta regroup a little bit.
So, you know, I, I think that, you know, so the bottom line is, is that, you know, we'll need to have as an action item. I mean, it's on there as a discussion tonight, but we'll need to have as an action item next month to approve the addition of, of a kindergarten teacher. And that, you know, we, we talked about, you know, from a budget standpoint, I mean, the budget's approved. It's not like we go back to the voters and say, can you add another $50,000 for a kindergarten teacher and, and benefits? It's, you know, go find it.
Yep.
Unfortunately, that's the.
If you flip on the stats, here's where we find it. And so just so you know, we have projected liberally $80,000 of projected costs and that includes salary and benefits. Is based on, A, an experienced teacher, 10 years' experience with a master's degree and taking on our full family healthcare. So that was, are we going to get this, this position, if we advertise it, is going to be very clear. This is a one-year position. We're not going to get experienced teachers jumping and saying, oh, I've got my food. Cause we'll make it clear, you're likely to be riffed at the end of this year. We just, to be honest with them and say, this is not a, you're not being welcomed to our staff forever. We want high-quality candidates, but we don't see it. So with that, so knowing that we probably can hire for less than that, we still said, let's find 80,000 so we can hire the best candidate that walks in our door.
What's the expense load that you figure on salary?
In this case, it's about 55,000 is the, is the straight salary expense and then 25 is the benefits.
And why are you offering this for just one year to be riffed after one year?
Because.
I've heard that before, but I need to hear the reasoning again.
And, and we need to, within the contract, we can't, it cannot be a one-year contract. The only time we can offer a one-year contract that says you're done and at the end of this year is if we hire after August 1st, which we don't want to do. We'd like to hire as soon as possible. But looking by these numbers, it's fully possible because we've advertised, we have pushed, you know, we have, we made calls everywhere. We're trying to find every kindergarten that's out there. We don't think we're going to see 14 more. We think we might see four or five more. And so if you look at our enrollment, we've had 90 or 92 first graders and second graders split between four teachers. And so if our number, if we come in high 80s, 90, we're likely to sit here next year and say, we can do it with four. If we get to 100, I think we'll come back and say five, but we don't want to lock ourselves into the idea that this is going to be five teachers for the next six years.
Kevin, K to, K to five right now, we have a total of 24 teachers. And so this is going to bump it to 25 for the next school year. But depending on, you know, the, the next kindergarten class could be, you know, 60. You know, it, it could drop right back down. So we may be able to go back down to 24 in K to six, K to five for the 2014, 2015 school year. So that's why it, it, it's a, it's a one-year position now. If we get another class of that size, then yeah, maybe there is another, you know, then, then maybe that person does stay on and that kind of thing, but, you know, there's at least a fairly good chance that that position won't be filled again next year. So, or the following year.
What we do in the hiring process is just be, make it crystal clear to any candidate saying, in all likelihood, know that we're gonna, we're gonna go through a riff process at the end of this year. Now, if we have a retirement, something like that, it's possible we're going to be able to offer you a position. But if everybody stays on, you're the last hired, you would be not offered a position next year based on, on our contract. We just be very upfront about that.
Just a question in terms of hire, I mean, is this, you know, if you're looking for somebody with 10 years' teaching experience, I mean, is that a change in hiring philosophy? I mean, how, I know there's teachers who are in the system, who are much younger with a lot less experience, who are wonderful teachers. How do they get in?
It's not that we look for that. That's not a job criteria, but we budget for that. So when we know we've got, when we build next year's budget and we know somebody's retiring, we don't just assume that we're going to be able to hire somebody and that's where our savings come from. We, we build, this is our standard. We build it at that master's level 10. And that way, and, and you'll see, you know, as we're kind of coming into, I mean, some of the savings I'm proposing for next year are based on some of that. We, we, we now know the candidates, the quality candidates we have on the table for our special ed director. We budget at a certain level. We've got some high-quality candidates that we are not going to have to go to that level. So that's a savings.
So our, our typical new hire might only be five years' experience instead of 10, but you're giving yourself the room that if that's what you need.
We don't want to short yourself.
We don't want to come into a, into a hiring process and look and say, oh, I wish we could hire you, but we just didn't put that money in the budget for you. It's, it's been our philosophy and I think it's a good one.
So certainly with these items here, you, you've got it covered, you know, depending on where you, where you come out, so.
You know, and I, and I would just kind of highlight that, that bottom, that bottom piece from part two. You know, that, you know, we know we're going to have funding for it. Our intention is not to dedicate that in the budget. Our intention is to pump that money right back into our after-school program. But it does give us a buffer. That's another reason for looking at and saying, why not do it?
So.
So we'd like to do this as soon as possible.
Okay, but what, what do you need in terms of us approving this from a time standpoint? I mean, can you go out and start the hiring process now and we approve this at our next meeting?
You actually have it on your action matter. So 7.2, which is enrollment slash personnel, is actually this.
Okay.
So.
Then I guess we'll, we'll discuss it again very briefly then and blow it on. I'm sorry, I missed that piece on there and I didn't, didn't see that, so that's, okay, great.
Would love to advertise this tomorrow.
Yeah, no, that, then I, I think we can, we can blow it on. I can't promise approval, but we can blow it on. So.
Are we going to discuss, I mean, I didn't see it on the agenda and I thought it was the part two? You said you were going to bring us up to speed where we were on that. Is that?
I'm, I'm happy to discuss it.
The after-school program, the live wire versus part two.
You know, we've been pretty intentional that, you know, it was kind of informal discussions and, you know, we really don't bring building usage issues to you. And in, in the purest sense, that's kind of what I think it is. It's an auxiliary service that we provide because we think it's important to our community, but I don't know that the board necessarily wants to get involved to that level of minutia in.
Well, I just think kind of the cat's out of the bag on it now. It would be nice to just know exactly what it is and what it means.
Do you rest?
Yeah, you know.
We can do it informally, or we can do it.
No, I, I guess, you know, why don't we go ahead and have a discussion of it? I don't know if we can still add an adjustment to the agenda, but, you know, to us. Um, so, let, let's talk about the playground, the snow days, and then we'll come back to that, uh, back to that one. Playground.
Playground. Um, so we, the, the current, and this is the large playground located behind the gyms uh, by the playing fields, the one that, you know, at any given time, it'll have two hundred students out for middle school recess and serves every one of our kids in every program. Built in nineteen ninety-five, it's wooden construction. Um, Dave is a certified playground inspector and on a, on nearly a monthly basis inspects. And he's been kinda giving me a heads up, saying, I'm watching this, I'm watching this. His inspection this month said, in my watching, um, he gave me some photos of some pillars that are demonstrating some not, not dangerous dry rock, but it's, basically he got to the point of saying, you know what, this is, this is going to fail inspection sometime next year, probably during the school year. And they're, they're pretty liberal standards, which means you could fail inspection and still be safe, but that says, at that point, you gotta close the playground. We've been already removing elements, that's how we've dealt with it up till now. Um, his, his advice is, you can't do playground construction during the school year. You just can't do it. So if we don't do something.
Kids love construction equipment.
They do, you're right.
And it's so safe for playgrounds. We just give them hard hats.
So his, his message is, um, we should, we should move on a new playground construction, and we should do it this summer. And the current projection is one hundred thousand dollars. I know, I, so, here, here is.
Bake sales.
There you go, Kathy, good job. Fundraising isn't it?
Looks like you're jumping back from the late days.
I know. Guess who's going in right next to me?
Yeah. So here, here is my, my conversation that came out of our financial management review with Bob Mason and Mike Nadeau today, is we currently have thirty-two thousand in our construction fund. And at this point, based on our FMR, um, we're gonna finish the year, just based on today, thirty-one thousand to the good, you know, basically compared to what we're legally around to spend before we spend the ninety thousand we dedicated from, you know, fund balance. I would, I would like us to consider, as, as we get closer to the end of the year, moving from fund balance, funds from this year into that construction fund. Um, if we can get close to seventy in that construction fund, I've already talked to the PTO, the PTO, I, I guess, I've talked to the PTO chair.
Okay.
I haven't had a general PTO, I didn't think, can't, can't really go to the general body before I come to you with this. PTO chair said, we, we could right now, based on our funds, and not such a community project, we could write you a check for five thousand, get us to seventy-five. I've got breakfast scheduled with Joe Enness, who was the fundraising chair in nineteen ninety-five, and go out and say, here's what we're gonna try to do, is we're gonna, we're gonna make a capital campaign. We're going after twenty-five thousand from the community to get this done this summer, and we'll start as soon as next month. Just, just go after it. I mean, I think the seventy we can do. I mean, wi- within the budget that we have, and, and see if we can make it work. It's, it's a huge community asset. I don't think we've got necessarily, you, you can't necessarily back fundraise. If we gotta do it this summer, you know, those little thermometers only work until. But that's, that's what I'm asking us to consider, because I, we've gotta do it. You know, I, we would love to wait a couple of years. We'd love to, I've talked about having it be part of the bond and that sort of thing. We're not gonna make it.
Now, I understand the other playgrounds that is on the other side is about, in similar disrepair to?
Not, not to the extent, as he inspects it, it's not in imminent.
The kindergarten one on the other side of the trailers?
No, not, not the triple E one, but the other wood one.
The one that's right behind Alpha, you're saying?
One right behind Alpha. Um, we just, he looked at it, we actually just put new mulch on it. Uh, and it's, it's one honestly we look at that, you know, if we had to close it, it'd be unfortunate, but we can take folks to the other side. Plus, we're gonna build a nice one right across the street.
You can have the Davis one, right, right.
The Davis Park ones, they're, yeah, so, so it's like, but we, we've gotta have that big playground. And so we're looking at replacing it with a full metal structure. They don't do the wood anymore. Or Parks and Rec, they've got a ton of information from everything they just collected to put the new beach one in. And that's, I, so, that's my discussion.
Two questions. Number one, I mean, it seems like it's been on a lot of other people's radar for a long time that it was getting to the point of unsafe. I mean, why, why is it now, not before budget timing? What, what just prompted it that all of a sudden, you know, I've had people tell me that it wasn't safe before.
Really?
And now, boom.
Because our inspections have said, it's gonna hold. You know, with, that we can get, I mean, I know when we've had our facilities conversation, Dave has always said, you know, this is a twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, you know, this is, we're gonna get there, and that's where we can reach it.
Is it, you know, um, you mentioned there's money in the, in the construction fund already. I don't know what sort of conversations the facilities committee has had, um, but I've gotta think that there will be, uh, you know, some, some preliminary costs for that work. Uh, and, and, you know, one of the thing, thoughts that have been in the back of my mind, okay, what's in the construction fund? And, and is that money available to deal with some of these, you know, planning issues to hire consultants, architects, whomever it might be?
Right.
Um, you know, well before we get to a, a bond vote, and, and so, you know, I have no idea what those sort of, you know, planning costs might come to, uh, but I'd hate to take every penny out of the construction fund and put it into a playground, uh, and, and, you know, not be able to deal with the facilities committee work.
Right. We had, we had in our O and M budget for next year, set aside fifteen, that we built that in for any work we needed to do around the facilities work next year. That, that was part of Dave's, because we've got the carpet done, and we don't, some of those larger capital things, we talked about doing the library and just said, not touching the library, that doesn't make sense. If we're gonna have a conversation about redoing that wing, why would we replace carpet two years later?
But, um, I guess before, you know, before I would support, uh, spending money out of the construction fund on that, I'd wanna have a better handle on what the costs are likely to be, uh, for the facilities work, 'cause I, I mean, frankly, I think, me personally, that's more important than the playground. Um, the, you know, I guess I, I also would like, you know, i- if, if, if we could delay it a year. Um, just, you know, how much could we fundraise, you know? And, and granted, you know, turf fields at CVU are a different deal than a playground at Shelburne Community School. Uh, but, you know, my understanding is we're talking about raising seven figures for that.
Yeah, two point one.
Uh, yeah, so, um, you know, and, and maybe that'll suck up all the charitable money out of, you know.
So let's, so let's go first.
Yes, let's go first.
Uh, but, you know, could, you know, rather than do it as a budget item, how much of that could we raise? Uh, and, and, you know, instead of it being seventy, thirty, maybe fifty, fifty, or, you know, I, I don't know. And, and I realize that we're talking about a short window. Um, you know, is it something that, you know, could be done incrementally?
I was gonna say, you can do it in stages. We haven't really talked about that, but I've done a playground in stages.
You've removed pieces of equipment before, already.
Right.
How many are?
What's left?
How many are, I mean, there, there are some left, obviously. Are all of them bad? Could you take, could you take some of the structures from the Davis Park playground and move them up? I mean, in other words, could you spend ten thousand dollars and buy us a year?
We can look at that. Yeah, that's, that's a good.
I mean, suboptimal, but it would buy us some time.
Yeah.
You know, I know Charlotte did a fundraiser for their playground, they went through it, and they raised considerable amount of money in a very short window of time.
I have to say, people like playgrounds. No, honestly, you can, it's a, it's a fundraiser that usually does, you know, gather a lot of money.
Um, when we lived in Connecticut, uh, you know, they sold bricks with your names on, and, you know, there's all kinds of, you know, nifty things that, that you can do.
Can grab it and get your slide, Russ.
Thanks. Always love slides. So, um, I, I guess one thing then, though, that we ought to understand is, you know, what's a deadline for, you know, this year as opposed to next year? I mean, you know, when, when does a decision have to be made on, you know, moving ahead with, with something?
I mean, the other thing is that, you know, we've, we've had a bridge over the La Platte River that's been broken for a long time, and they found a way to buttress it. And is there any way to put something around the, the base of the playground foundations to, you know, dig out around at ground level, support things? Keep the, you know, support the dry rock up and below where the supports are? Is there any interim repair that could be made?
Love an engineer.
My other question was related to, you know, you, you, it sounds like Dave has an estimate already of a hundred grand, or is that just?
That's soft, yeah, and that's, that's liberal. That will, that will get it replaced, I mean.
But, but I guess I would, you know, I think if we're gonna have to spend a hundred thousand dollars, the community may wanna, I know when Betsy's doing her playground in Davis Park, I mean, they did all kinds of, you know, groups and deciding what type of playground, and there was a lot of emphasis on this natural playground instead of a steel. I mean, I think you would really wanna vet that, the kinda design process, a little bit, because.
I think, I think a natural playground is nice, but we're talking about something we don't wanna replace again in fifteen years.
Well, again, I don't know what.
Still, the, the, you know.
I think Betsy's a great resource.
Given, given the emails that we've gotten on this Live Wires thing, which we're gonna talk about in a minute, and the, you know, what went on with the, the fourth grade class size and, and all manner of things, uh, we're gonna be accused of, uh, you know, doing a playground in secrecy and ramming it through without sufficient community input.
A secret playground.
And, you know, I think Tim brings up an extremely valid point, uh, when it comes to that, so. I, you know, I, I mean, I, again, I don't know what exactly the timelines would be, even if we had an approved plan today, or, or what would it take to get an approved plan, but, yeah, you, you, you bring in, uh, you know, community relations issues, if you wanna lump it under that, and I'm just not sure that you could pull it off uh, between now and, you know, the, the summer construction season, whatever that might be.
Back to the drum.
Playground conspiracy.
But I would say that, you know, I think it's a incredibly important asset for the school. I mean, I happen to be there on Monday or Tuesday, the only nice day, and it's just, I mean, it's, uh.
And all weekend long, too.
I would say, I go up there early evening, you know, to go to my car, and it's just packed with kids.
Yeah, I mean, my, my, my worry is to be sitting, sitting here next November, you know, and we, we fail inspection, and, and then we're trying to shut it down. And we're gonna get through the year, but I guess that's.
That, valid concern.
I mean, that's the, I mean, that's the conversation.
Could we put it on next month's agenda?
I, well, um, you know.
I think you got a task.
I think we need a committee.
Um, I, you know, I, I do. I, I think that, um, you know, we, we've gotta have another committee on that, and, um, you know, maybe it's a, an offshoot of the facilities committee, maybe it's a different committee. Uh, but I, but I think that, um, yeah, I mean.
I think a lot of the work probably has already been done by Betsy.
Yeah, that's true, and turn to what the committee wants and what they, yeah.
But I think the idea of alternatives and, and sequence perhaps, and some shoring up and.
Shoring it up and splicing it, or whatever it takes to keep it alive.
Those areas that, that are not in good shape.
What, what is, I, you know, what is the town doing? I, I haven't paid any attention to that.
The town is, as I've talked with Betsy, the Davis Park playground is gone. It's already gone.
Okay.
And their timeline is to replace it. They're replacing it with a earthscape's natural playground, but it's based on, the reason they're not replacing with traditional playground is, as Betsy says, why would we do that when there's a great playground across the street? So we're gonna do something different here that's gonna be, you know, just kind of all looks, knowing that.
Is, is there demand for both playgrounds?
Yes.
I think so.
There is.
Especially during the day, because we don't encourage.
Well, I hope there's.
Well, I mean, my neighborhood uses, uh, there's a hundred and.
Thanks, Russ.
How many, there's like.
Oh, the school day. Moms don't like bringing their small children up to their middle school.
There's seventy-two hundred homes in Davis Park that.
Oh, really?
Have recently turned over, and each person brought three kids, so.
Four, three.
Oh, four, three.
Yeah, so.
Wow.
You know, I think, get, all those playgrounds get a lot of use.
What's the age of the, the play, the current playground?
Eighteen years.
Was there a warranty with it?
It was projected to last, any wooden playground, I guess, according to Dave, the last fifteen years. That's your projected life of it. We didn't pay for it originally, and that was my conversation with Joan. It was a community fundraiser to create this, it's dedicated, if you, there's a big rock there, it's dedicated to Snelling, the Snelling family. And so, and that's where, you know, Joan and I are getting it together, and I wanna know the history of that, too, 'cause I, I'm just learning. It's all before my time.
So it was community fundraised before the school didn't have to pay for it, but now the school is expected to pay for it?
I don't know about expected. We use it. It, it's a fundamental piece of our, our program, so.
No question, but, um.
Because we don't even own that, we don't even own that property, do we? I mean, that's town property.
Uh, I think we do, actually. I think we own it to, it's our property to the sidewalk, to that, that path.
Maybe loosely, I, I don't, I, I don't know the boundary.
Is Joan willing to do the fundraising, or you haven't approached that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I, I, I think that, yeah, I mean, this has to be a committee thing, and, and, you know, I, if anybody feels differently, please say so. I, I, I don't know how we pull this off. To do it properly, I, I'm not sure that we could pull this off by the summer, to, to have it in, in the ground by the summer. And, you know, Tim.
I get some ideas. I'll talk to you on the fly now.
Okay.
But do you, I mean, do you think, are people in agreement that we need to form a committee to do this, or?
I'm not sure about a committee, but I think we definitely need more information and more discussion around it.
I mean, we, we did list a few options that we could explore to get us another year.
Right, alternatives to just dropping a hundred K.
Right, maybe.
Not an all or nothing.
Right, either phase in or repairs to current that buys us whatever time that we need to make a.
But I heard that you'd like us to look into some repairs at this point in time to ensure safety.
Keep it safe.
Well, repairs, but also, uh, you know, a bigger fundraising commitment than, you know, than maybe twenty-five grand. Um, you know, and, and I guess the, the reason why, you know, I guess I'm stuck on having a, a committee of some description to look at this is, um, I think a committee involving board members could move this, once it's constituted, can move this forward faster than you guys working on it, having to go wait, you know, come back to the board. I mean, we're gonna meet in May, we're gonna meet at the end of May for the retreat, and I think we have a small business meeting middle to the end of June.
Right.
Uh, I mean, that, that's what we're facing on our calendar for the balance of this year, so, um.
Right, we'll certainly have more data, and I can task Dave with it ASAP.
I would think that it would be a very short construction, yeah, I mean, I would, like a week probably, and it's done, right?
Right, these, these new ones that come in, and they come in pre, you know, you're not bolting, you're not constructing and cutting. It's just, here's your package. A lot of the companies, as part of the package, is they come in and they install it.
I did it twelve years ago.
Everybody also wants to build it in the same timeframe, at least any of them that are related to a school. Uh, so, you know, are, are they all booked at this point? I mean, who, who knows?
Mortel.
I put one in twelve years ago, and we got, um, some local businesses to come and help us put it in, so we saved like twenty-five grand.
So, yeah, I, I think that we, you know, we need to look at more creative ways to finance it and, and to, and to do this whole thing, and, and to get the community input and, and all those things uh, that, um, you know, my, my feeling is that we should, you know, at our next meeting, charge a committee to look at this, or to, you know, dump it on the facilities committee, or, you know, however we wanna do it, but.
Well, I think if the community knew. Well, I think if the community knew that the school was paying to had, you know, what they've done to keep it alive. And keep it, uh, you know, as a viable resource, uh, they will, and and they understand the condition.
Yeah.
I mean, again, transparency, I think, is what the community is, you know, that that's how you get community support.
Yeah.
Without transparency, then they turn against it. So, to spring it on them, all of a sudden that we need a hundred thousand dollars. They're they're not gonna go for that, but if they know what we're doing.
Yeah.
Um.
Should we draw, should our next board corner article be about a playground, a needed playground, rather than kneecap?
If 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 Dave can articulate for us what has been done and what needs to be done. And we, we could put it in the board corner, we could put it in the, you know, school bulletin, whatever. But just, let's let the community know and let, because they're gonna be part of the solution ultimately.
Sure, and the users for sure.
Mm-hmm.
I would say that it's more of a Shelburne news story than a board corner story. I mean, I think.
Yeah.
If, you know, we would call and, you know, let's do a news story and, you know, I think before you get the news story out. You wanna have a, an idea of if there is gonna be fundraising or something like that, so then that can be a follow on after that. But I don't think the board's role is really to report on that unless, you know.
And and we've got, you know, Dave is a celebrity, uh, you know, facilities manager, so. Do a picture of him out there in the playground and all that.
No, okay, we can leverage our green ribbon schools too. Try to be a green ribbon school.
Without a playground.
Without a playground.
I I bet, I bet there's some grant for that.
I was thinking that too.
I bet.
Grant.
We we had about fifty percent grants. That's why, yeah.
Yeah, I I asked Betsy about that. She said, why they're calling.
And they couldn't, I mean, that was twelve years ago.
So, you guys are gonna, you're gonna go back to Dave. We're gonna look at options. Uh, we'll we'll talk about this between now and the next meeting. Um, decide at our next agenda meeting how and what it needs to be on on the agenda for our our May meeting. Um, snow day is actually, again, I missed it. We've got an action item on that. Apparently, we need to vote on that tonight, so, um. Uh, and I'm not sure I saw anything in the packet on that. Maybe somebody else has it, but, um.
Snow days is actually just a, just a discussion right now.
It's on here as action items. It says two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, approved calendar, snow days.
We gotta make a decision.
Seven point four.
Yeah.
That's been crossed off and moved to, that was one of the adjustments, was to move that to a discussion item.
Well, we've gotta have a decision because we gotta have a graduation day.
The conversation at the SU board with Elaine was that we, you, if you make the decision now, then you risk some, you you risk. Another snow day, a wind day, a weather day, which would then add another day. And so, what her position was, was that get the intention during discussion. Would the board entertain that in an action item, which would allow you to do your graduation and then take action on it?
I'd say, I I, we can leave it as an action item and then just table it if we decide not to take a vote on it. Um. I I, much much matters one way or the other. We need to, I guess we need to talk about it. Uh, but Tim, you wanted to, uh, add the live wires.
Sure.
Thing to, thing to the discussion. Yeah, it's gonna be a late night. Um. You know, they're they're, I've re, you know, I guess we've all received some emails from some parents who were concerned about the decision to. Uh, you know, basically replace the Y program with a program that, uh, is being implemented throughout CSSU. And that is, uh, uh, a program that is, you know, controlled by us as opposed to, uh, the current program. Which I I'm sure there's a lot of good qualities to it, but it's it's letting an outside organization come in, use our facility for free. Uh, to run their program.
That's great.
So, uh, you know, there's some people who, you know, were not happy with that. Um, some people who felt that, uh, the communication on it was, uh, you know, inadequate. Uh, and then, you know, there were a couple of people who sent emails that said, hey, you know, I'm happy with it and happy with what the school's doing and and didn't have any issues. And, you know, these people, you know, don't speak for me. Uh, so, um. You know, I I, it was something that was discussed as part of the budget process. Um, I don't think it was anything, and and I think that's how, you know, the administration looked at it. It wasn't anything that required. Uh, board approval to do this. Um, so, you know.
Yeah, and it was a, it was a very conscious decision that we talked about in terms of. How how much communication was going to be helpful in terms of coming to, ideally, always search for a linear solution. And I think, um, September, it'll be crystal clear. We gotta win win solution.
I don't, I don't think you have to wait until September. I think that, I think.
Yeah.
The information that we have on the program, the fact that it's already exists in Heinsberg. And you've got feedback from other people in that program that they like it.
Yeah.
I mean, this all just comes down to somebody moves someone's cheese, and people can't adapt to change, and they just need to ask the questions. And and uncertainty is tough, but after Monday, a sign, I mean, a significant number of questions were answered. And I I don't, I don't believe in any further information is necessary other than, okay. I wish I already feel bad about how you found out. There's a lot of people that were involved, you know? And you explained this to me on the phone, and I appreciate it. You called me that night. You called me that night. And, uh, you know, and then I created that list of questions and they all got answered. And, you know, I believe this is a vocal minority that are upset about this problem. And I think we've seen this situation before and we can learn from it and move on. I don't think we need to spend another forty five seconds on this, in my, my opinion. And if if anybody wants to see all the questions that I had answered in the next piece of paper, I'll glad to share that with everyone, so.
So, I guess my question is, is it just the schools running the program themselves or is there a third party involved?
It is the, we have contracted with Jeff O'Hara. Who's currently the assistant principal at Heinsberg and as and kind of an outside contract that he does. He runs after school programs. He's done it in South Burlington, done it in other places. So, we, we're gonna contract with him. He's going to be the program director. He's the one that gives us the licensing. His current in-building director, Lorian Layden, is going to move to Shelburne and be our onsite director. And then we'll, they'll coordinate hiring of staff. I mean, it it really is. One of our conditions was Patty and I don't have the expertise or the time to take on another task. So, can this be done in a way that we have qualified personnel that are gonna run a program? But are willing to work with us in a way that says, these ideas we have, we wanna implement, we wanna expand it.
Further the education program.
Yeah.
So, basically, it's just changing to a new subcontractor.
Exactly.
That's gonna more align with the educational goals of the school. I mean, is that?
That's what it is.
Really it. And I just have to say that we also, um, have had this limiting factor with the YMCA where fifty children is the cap. And we've heard loud and clear from people that that's really anxiety provoking for working parents who need a resource where they can bring their children. So, that's been an overarching message that I've heard from people. This is one way to do it, you know, so that's one of the.
So, there's no limit?
There's no limit. They will take as many children as possible.
Where's the facility gonna be located?
Oh, in our school.
Okay, and is, was the Y, were the kids at the Y before?
No, they're in our building.
They weren't at school.
Okay, so the the Y was just providing the personnel.
Right, what what did happen? In fact, I mean, if you look at it, kind of in a pragmatic business sense, alls we've done is told the Y that you can no longer have our facility. For free, if if the Y wants to relocate to the town hall and offer a competing program, they could do that. It's certain. They, there's nothing that says the Y can't have an after-school program in Shelburne.
Do the fam, do people pay for that?
Oh, yes.
So, it's funded by the parents?
And the Y.
And and state state subsidies as well, you know, for those people who cannot afford. But yes, it's a private pay.
It's, I mean, it's privately paid. They use the facility for free, but a portion of our tuition that we pay into it. Doesn't go to supporting Shelburne programs. It goes to support other programs in other schools for, through the Y. So, which is great, you know, it helps fund some summer camps, but this program will fund. A hundred percent of the program in Shelburne. You know, we're not gonna be financing other things, so it could be better opportunities for kids and more efficient within Shelburne.
But is he a commercial business or is it a not-for-profit? The O'Hara who runs it?
They're putting together, he he does it through CSSU as a consulting business. But, I mean, all employers are gonna be CSSU employees.
I mean, I don't really know.
That's where it's headed.
So, that's a great deal to me. Nice job.
Thanks.
And then there's also, there's also this other program, overtime, that's, uh, they're trying to start, which is over at Shelburne and Fieldhouse. Yeah, so there's gonna be plenty of opportunities for.
And that's an after-school program?
Yeah, it's just starting up, so if somebody's unhappy with that too.
Right, and they, you know, their their kids are there voluntarily. They're paying for it. If you don't like it, make a decision, go somewhere else. Yeah. Um, so, let's move on to action matters where we got a whole bunch of them. Um, first is, um, okay, so seven point one, adopt local calendar. Are we doing that?
That's the pro forma existing, uh, for next year. Doesn't have anything to do with the snow days.
So, do we have a motion to approve that calendar for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year?
Show move, second.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion on it or any discussion?
So, we're, okay, the, uh.
It's basically looks very similar to this year.
You know, half days, the conference days.
Well, we have the, we do have the day after the vacation comes back. Where did that go? So, we have the day before town meeting day off again.
I think that can back, right, yes.
It's a teacher in-service day.
Right.
But no.
No student.
Right.
Priorities.
Sandy sent me an advance copy.
It's a little Rashashama disappeared or.
It's on Saturday this year.
Ah, that's why, that's where that day is. Okay, got it. Trying to figure where that day went. That's all.
So, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, seven point two, enrollment, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen personnel. Was there anything? I didn't see anything in the packet on that this morning when I printed that.
That's kindergarten.
That's kindergarten, okay. Um, so, do we have a motion to authorize the hiring of an additional kindergarten teacher for twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, approving the job sharing request. That was, um, uh, Maitland.
Mark.
That we discussed last month, and you were gonna look into that a little bit further and come back with some information and a position on it. And we'll take a vote on that tonight.
Yes.
Go for it.
Is that now?
Yeah.
I didn't know if you wanted to give a session.
Um. That's a good question. And we don't, you know, there'd be another adjustment to the agenda that we didn't do. Um, you tell us, are are we discussing, you know, confidential personnel matters that should be done in a, in an executive session? Or are we, um, you know, things that you were comfortable with discussion, discussing in open session?
Um, we're.
Because we can't approve it in executive session. We have to approve it.
Pretty specific.
Yeah.
I I would say that there could be some.
There are some implications that would be personnel.
Okay, so I guess we're adding, uh, an executive session. Yeah, having a heck of a night. Um, all right, so we're gonna table that one for the moment. Uh, approving calendar, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, snow days. Um, so what I'd like to do here is. We'll get a motion, we'll get a second, we'll discuss it, and if we decide we wanna move forward with it after discussion and approve it, we will. And if we decide that that's a bad idea, then we'll decline it, or, you know, we'll vote against it, vote it down tonight, and it'll come back next month. Does that work? Okay. Uh, so can we have a motion to approve the two thousand twelve, thirteen, snow days?
Some.
Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so, what's the deal with the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, snow days?
So, uh, three days canceled.
Okay.
For, snow days are really, weren't snow days, but anyway, it's in that school.
One of them was a snow day.
The last one was a.
He's from Alaska.
All right, so, so based on that, that drops us to, because we had a hundred and seventy six student days scheduled in the calendar. That drops us to a hundred and seventy three. Legally, we have to have a hundred and seventy five.
Mm-hmm.
We're scheduled to have the last day of school be Wednesday. Um, so automatically that moves us to Friday. Could move us to Monday if you wanna add the full three days back. Um, administration recommendation would be make Friday the last day of school, keep Monday, Tuesday as teacher in-service days. That that fulfills the requirement. Um, that would allow me to do eighth grade graduation on Thursday, the thirteenth. Can't be on Friday. That's that conflicts with CBU and everything they do.
Yeah.
But it would mean that eighth graders would not. I really don't want eighth graders back after I graduated them. That would be. And so, we put graduation on that Thursday. Eighth graders don't come back on Friday. I mean, I guess as we're thinking about it, if we get another day, if we need to add another day, I'd still like to have graduation, uh, that Thursday. Because the the requirement is that the majority of our school will be in session for a hundred and seventy five days. We can get away with.
Eighth graders.
We miss the eighth graders.
Yeah.
And that that still fulfills the legal requirement.
So, um, all right, so the, so you're talking then about the fourteenth and and bagging one of the days. So, the issue with approving this tonight is if we have to cancel another day?
Right, then you're going until Tues, you would have gone till Tuesday. But since you waived one, you're back to going to Monday.
Which we come back and add at this point, as long as we.
Right.
But at this point, I think we can approve tentatively that this is our plan and.
Well, we can approve it and then we'd have to unapprove it and approve a new one.
What I'd like, what I'd like to do.
No more snow days.
Or reapply it.
If we can, if we can get some agreement that doing that graduation on the thirteenth, because I've got, you know, a stream of folks saying. We, we know.
Yeah.
You know, Grandma and Grandpa are coming into town and I've got these reservations. Are you gonna try to do graduation on Monday? It was, no, we're not. No, it's ridiculous.
Russ, what did you do for your eighth grade graduation?
Me personally or for my kids?
You personally. That's just a fine moment for a Russ moment on eighth grade graduation year.
Can you remember?
As I say, in those days, eighth grade graduation wasn't quite the same.
He took his horse in part and went and got milk from the local farmer.
That it is today. Uh, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Bob, Kathy, Tim, you guys all with me on that one?
That's my comment on the wedding, uh, travel plans for eighth grade graduation, three months in a day.
When I, when I, you know, we we had a kegger for.
All right, so, I don't think, I don't see any problems here with approving two days.
So, uh, so we're talking about the fourteenth as our, as our last date, so, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, motion, motion carries and if we need to, if we need to revisit this, the weather report for Thursday and Fridays, actually, tomorrow and Friday is actually a little bit dicey.
Really?
Hopefully, they've still got the snow tires on the buses or.
Yeah, we may have as much as an inch of.
No, say nuts, okay.
And one report I saw for Friday was talking about the possibility of rain or freezing rain, so. Uh, so, so we've just guaranteed now that we'll have, you know, some, some sort of, uh, some sort of weather event. Um, seven point five is awarding an electrical upgrade contract, and I believe there's, uh, uh, something in here with that. Um, Bob is recommending the bid be awarded to the low bidder, Andrews Electric. This was part of that bond issue. Um, that we're doing through, um, I I guess it's, um, Efficiency Vermont or whatever the the organization name is. Um, and the zero percent, uh, the zero percent interest rate bond, so, um. We have a motion on that one?
Show move.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Is, um, I assume the bid's within the amount that we.
I I assume so, yeah. Uh, all in favor of approving Edward Andrews Electric?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um. Seven point six, resolution approval for updating financial account signature cards, and I don't see anything in my packet on that one. Do we know what that one is?
Is that, is that credit cards, like for phone credit cards or, uh? As a clerk, I used to have to sign off on the credit cards. Is that what we're talking about?
I honestly don't know. I apologize for that.
You you probably have to sign off on your bank account. Right, we used to have signature cards. I I had to sign signature cards to be able to sign off.
It's probably Bob. I'll send him a message.
So, we'll come back to that one. Uh, seven point seven is reaffirm the code of conduct for ourselves. So, we'll come back to that one. Uh, seven point seven is reaffirm the code of conduct for ourselves. Uh, so do we have a motion on, uh, on seven point seven?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We all have to behave ourselves, even you, Dave.
Absolutely, I'll follow your lead, Russ.
Uh, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Uh, and then seven point eight is one that we had added, this was a leave of absence request, uh, for Carol Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Um, and so I gather from the email that she was requesting, I, I, it sounds like she's taking leave at some point through the balance of this year, um, FMLN?
She took FML, she's taken FMLA leave earlier.
Okay.
And just, within the confidential nature of just what we've, this, this is not a health issue for Carol, but she asked us not to go too much beyond that. Um, so she would be starting off next year on FMLA, and so it's roughly sixteen days she has to continue. She's requesting the remainder of the year as a leave of absence, she's assuring us that she does want to come back, she has our support for this. I think it's the right decision to make.
So, um, let's get a motion then to approve the leave of absence request, and then we'll, we'll have a little bit more discussion on it.
Second.
Okay, so, um, I had emailed you guys a list of, of, you know, questions or, or things that I, you know, wanted to have addressed on this. Uh, so, is the intent then to, um, either hire from the outside or internally somebody would shift over to this, or?
We've got some viable in-building candidates, obviously we haven't talked to them because the leave hasn't been approved yet, but got some folks that could do a great job for us internally.
And Carol's a point eight?
She is a point eight.
Okay, so how would that?
She is currently, I think I can say this right, she's been hired for the point two.
I don't know if that was approved at the boys level?
Uh, yes, it was, and it was just.
I don't know what, just, okay.
Yeah, so, we, Carol has ELL certification.
Okay.
And so our ELL enrollment, which is just our, our students of English as a Second Language, that has gone from eight at the start of the year to twenty-five currently right now. Um, so, so.
It only gets better.
We've added additional capacity during the year.
Is that, is that because people moved in, or because people were finally evaluated and, and they were?
No, it's move-ins.
This is move-ins.
That's what we were just discussing at CSSU, remember?
So our transient population and some of our, it's a little bit of everything.
Yeah, it's not just transient.
So, one way or the other, we would be replacing Carol as the literacy coordinator and for, for the year.
And it happens that we're also going to have this, this point two that she's going to fill for us for the remainder of the year, she's been hired for that, fully committed to that. But, you know, even as we look at it, there's some real possibility that we could find a candidate that could fill both those roles for us continuing on through next year.
But, but if, if Carol's position were filled by somebody internally, then you've still gotta go find a long-term sub for that position for, for the year.
That becomes a CSSU problem, but, see, uh, we, those are services we, you know, are assessing, we definitely work with it. You know, unfortunately, that has some potential for reallocation, there's a little bit more flexibility within CSSU because they could take a resource, kind of like we're doing now. We picked up, Charlotte had a drop in capacity, and we have a point two that we're getting a person who's part-time Charlotte, part-time loss, and then we've added this other piece, so it's kind of a patchwork. But it's working because we're providing services to individual students, so it's a viable way to do it.
And you really do have to look at that student number, because that number could go down by ten, and then we wouldn't need those services anymore, so.
Um, I, I know, you know, in the past, people have asked for and requested leaves of absence, and, and so I, you know, I'm sure the, uh, the contract allows for this sort of thing. You know, I know some of the, some of the leaves in the past we've supported because they were, you know, arguably gonna help this person's educational effectiveness, it doesn't sound like this is one of those situations.
This is a one situation.
And that's not, you know, neither good nor bad, or, or doesn't necessarily affect, you know, how I, I would, would view it. Um, you guys have already answered, you, you support this request. Uh, what happens if we don't approve it? If the board says, you know, it sounds like, you know, she's entitled to some amount of FMLA.
She should start up here on FMLA and put her in a very difficult decision.
I, you know, 'cause, I mean, um, you know, if, for, for many of us, you know, in, in the private sector in our day jobs, you, you can't do this. You know, they say, you know, call us.
You can't, you gotta decide, yeah, are you working for us next year or not?
Well, you know, let's remember, you know, last year you came to us with one of these, and you gave us some good reasons to not recommend it. But here you're saying you do recommend it and you have a way to solve the problem, it sounds like.
Right.
So, the, the FMLA portion, is that just a dollars and cents decision that you burn that up before you go on leave instead of just?
That's the requirement of law.
Okay, so that's the way you have to do it, okay.
Okay, any other discussion or questions, or? Uh, so we have a, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
She thinks you, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah, I, I just think we have to, you know, we, we have to ask these questions.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I don't think it's a good idea to just assume anybody can leave in Rutherford, Tampa, every time we'll say no.
Yeah.
Bob is going to make his way down here to answer that financial request.
Okay, well, let's, let's move on to the consent agenda. Uh, we had, um, pulled out the policy adoption, but there were three other items in there. Uh, so we have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Uh, do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, so our next meeting dates are, um, policy committee on April seventeenth, uh, board chair meeting April thirtieth. Uh, and then our regular CSSU and Shelburne meetings on May eighth. One item that's not on here, as I had mentioned earlier, is the legislative breakfast. Uh, I'm not sure who's coming from the legislature, um, but that is going to be Monday, uh, next Monday here at seven thirty. And I, I've been, I guess a couple of times, it's interesting, I, I'm not sure if I'm gonna be able to make it this time, but, uh, I'm, I'm gonna try, especially with the, what Elaine brought up about the, um, you know, about the, the possible CSSU budget implications, so. Let's give Bob, uh, another couple of minutes. Um, he, he says he's coming down here.
Yep, so Sandy's trying to get his attention.
What's that?
So Sandy is trying to get his attention.
Okay. And then, um, excuse me, we are going to go into executive session, we're, we're gonna go into executive session. Um, I don't know if you can, you know, shut down and give us a couple of minutes, or if you need to break the equipment down and, uh, you know, we can try to find another room, I don't know what's happening.
I can turn it off and come back when you guys are done.
Okay, I, I don't think we're gonna be too long with it, so.
No, 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 no.
Five minutes most.
But, uh.
You gonna have more stuff after that, or is that?
Well, we, we come back out of executive session, we are going to vote on a, um, uh, on this job share request at that point. Uh, so I don't know if you need to or want to, uh, turn the camera back on at that point and broadcast that little piece of it. It's your call. Um, do we have a motion to approve the job share request, that was item seven point three?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Is Bob joining us, or did he give you an explanation on?
He gave me an answer.
Okay.
So, this is something that he would recommend you doing. It is, uh, they need to change the signatures on their car account, he and Mike, so that they can do something around their adequate controls.
Okay.
I am happy to grab him back if you want a more in-depth explanation, but he, Bob's recommendation is, it would, uh, help them very much if you would approve that.
Oh, so do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, whatever it is.
Motion carries. And we are adjourned.
Thank you.